Black teacher defends bullied student. The words echoed in Marcus Washington's mind as he stood at the threshold of his classroom, watching the students file in for another day at Westlake High. He hadn't set out to be anyone's defender when he'd taken this teaching position eleven months ago. Back then, he'd simply been desperate for a job after the arts program cuts at his previous school had left him unemployed. Now, as the late September sun streamed through the windows of room two thirty seven, casting golden rectangles across the worn linoleum floor, Marcus felt the weight of responsibility settling deeper into his shoulders. The students shuffled to their desks, the usual morning cacophony of backpack zippers, chair legs scraping against floors, and teenage chatter filling the air. Marcus observed them with quiet attentiveness, his dark eyes taking in the social choreography playing out before him. The popular kids gravitating toward the back, the academically focused students claiming front row seats. And then there was Elijah Parker, alone at his desk by the window, shoulders hunched as if trying to make himself physically smaller, invisible. "Good morning, everyone," Marcus said, his deep voice cutting through the noise. "Let's get settled." He moved to his desk, a secondhand wooden affair with one slightly shorter leg that he'd stabilized with a folded piece of cardboard. The English department at Westlake High wasn't exactly flush with resources, but Marcus had done his best to make the room inviting. Walls adorned with literary quotes, student work, and a few carefully chosen posters featuring diverse authors. As Marcus began taking attendance, his eyes kept drifting to Elijah. The sixteen year old had transferred to Westlake just three weeks ago, and in that short time, Marcus had watched the boy retreat further into himself with each passing day. Today, the teenager's usually neat appearance seemed disheveled. His blue button down shirt was partially untucked, and there was a small tear at the sleeve that he kept fingering nervously. "Elijah Parker," Marcus called even though he could clearly see the boy. Elijah's hand rose halfway, a mumbled "here" barely audible from his lips. Marcus nodded and continued down the list, but his mind remained on Elijah. Something was off today, more so than usual. The boy's eyes were rimmed with red, his fingers trembling slightly as he opened his notebook. When the bell rang at the end of class, Marcus watched as Elijah gathered his belongings with deliberate slowness, clearly waiting for the classroom to empty before making his exit, a tactic Marcus recognized all too well from his own high school days. "Elijah," Marcus called gently. "Could you stay back a moment?" The boy froze, his backpack halfway onto his shoulder. Fear flickered across his face before being replaced by resignation. "I'm not in trouble, am I, Mr. Washington?" Elijah asked, his voice so quiet Marcus had to strain to hear it. "Not at all," Marcus assured him, gesturing to the chair beside his desk. "I just wanted to check in." Elijah hesitated before reluctantly making his way to the indicated seat. Up close, Marcus could see the faint bruising beginning to form around the boy's left eye, expertly concealed with what appeared to be makeup, but visible to anyone looking closely enough. Marcus felt his heart rate quicken, a protective anger stirring in his chest. He kept his voice deliberately calm. "How are you settling in at Westlake?" Elijah's eyes fixed on his own interlaced fingers. "Fine, I guess." "Just fine?" Marcus pressed gently. "Because I've noticed you seem withdrawn." "And if I'm not mistaken, that's the beginning of a black eye you're trying to hide." Elijah's hand instinctively went to his face, his fingers trembling slightly. "I walked into a door," he said automatically, the words practiced in hollow. Marcus leaned back in his chair, the old wood creaking beneath his weight. He remembered being seventeen, remembered the shame of being targeted, remembered the adults who had looked away. He wouldn't be one of them. "Doors don't usually leave knuckle marks, Elijah," he said softly. The boy's shoulders slumped, defeat written in every line of his body. A single tear escaped, tracking down his cheek before he roughly wiped it away. "It doesn't matter," Elijah whispered. "Telling just makes it worse." "It does matter," Marcus countered, sliding a box of tissues across the desk. "And while I can't promise that telling will immediately fix everything, I can promise that keeping silent definitely won't." Elijah pulled a tissue from the box but just held it, crumpling it between his fingers. "It's Jason Moore and his friends. They started the first day I got here. Called me, he swallowed hard, called me things, said I didn't belong here, that my fancy clothes and way of talking meant I thought I was better than everyone else." Marcus nodded, letting the boy continue at his own pace. "Yesterday, they followed me to the bathroom. Jason shoved me against the wall, said he was going to teach me my place. Then today, before school, they cornered me by the east entrance. No teachers around." Elijah's voice broke. "They took my mother's letter." "Your mother's letter?" Marcus prompted gently when Elijah fell silent. "She writes me one every morning." Elijah explained, a flush of embarrassment coloring his cheeks. "Puts it in my lunch. Just encouraging stuff." "It's stupid, I know." "It's not stupid at all," Marcus interrupted, his voice firm. "Not even a little bit." Elijah looked up, surprise momentarily replacing the shame in his eyes. "Son, what happened next?" Marcus asked. "They read it out loud, made fun of her words. Then Jason tore it up and..." Elijah's voice caught and flushed it down the toilet. "Said that's what he thought of my mommy's love." The last words came out as a whisper. Marcus felt a surge of fury that he carefully contained behind a measured expression. He'd been at Westlake long enough to know Jason Moore's reputation. Star athlete, wealthy family, untouchable in the eyes of many administrators who valued his father's generous donations to the athletic department. "I'm going to help you, Elijah," Marcus said, the promise settling between them like a physical thing. "This stops now." For the first time, a flicker of hope crossed Elijah's face, quickly extinguished by doubt. "You can't, Mr. Washington. Jason's dad is friends with Principal Harrington. Last year, when Jason got caught cheating on his math final, nothing happened." Marcus stood, straightening to his full six foot two height. "I'm not concerned with who Jason's father knows. I'm concerned with you and with creating a school environment where everyone is safe." He glanced at the clock. "You should get to your next class. I'll write you a pass." As Elijah left with his late slip, Marcus sank back into his chair, the weight of what he'd just committed to settling over him. He was still relatively new at Westlake. His contract wasn't guaranteed beyond this academic year. Principal Harrington had already made thinly veiled comments about Marcus's teaching style being a bit too progressive for their community, but as Marcus remembered the defeated slump of Elijah's shoulders, the carefully hidden bruise, the tears the boy had tried so desperately to conceal, he knew he couldn't turn away. Some things mattered more than job security. Some things were worth fighting for. The faculty lounge at lunchtime was a study in school hierarchy. The coaches clustered around one table, the senior teachers who'd been at Westlake for decades claimed another, while the younger or newer teachers scattered at the remaining spaces. Marcus sat alone, picking at his sandwich while reviewing the school's anti-bullying policy on his tablet. "Mind if I join you?" Marcus looked up to find Diane Lewis, the chemistry teacher whose classroom was across the hall from his. She was in her late fifties with salt and pepper hair cut in a practical bob, and sharp eyes that didn't miss much. "Please," Marcus said, clearing space for her lunch tray. Diane settled across from him, following his gaze to the tablet screen. "Bullying policy, huh? Good luck with that. It's got more holes than my lab safety goggles after twenty years of student use." Marcus offered a grim smile. "I was afraid of that." "Who's the target?" Diane asked, her directness one of the qualities Marcus had appreciated since his first day. "Elijah Parker, new transfer student, junior. Jason Moore and his crew are making the kid's life hell." Diane winced. "The Parker boy, bright kid, and Jason Moore is..." She lowered her voice. "Well, we all know what Jason Moore is. Untouchable, according to Elijah," Marcus said, unable to keep the bitterness from his voice. "Not entirely wrong." Diane took a bite of her salad, chewing thoughtfully. "His father bankrolled the new football field, and his grandfather's name is on the auditorium. History like that buys a certain amount of institutional blindness." "So what are you saying? I should just let it go?" Marcus could feel his temper rising, his fingers tightening around his water bottle. Diane's eyes flashed. "I didn't say that. I've been here twenty-three years, Marcus. I've watched good teachers come and go, some because they fought the wrong battles, others because they didn't fight any at all." She leaned forward. "The trick is knowing how to fight smart." Marcus raised an eyebrow. "I'm listening. Document everything, every incident, every conversation with Elijah, every interaction with Jason. Dates, times, direct quotes whenever possible. When you report it, and you should report it, have your evidence organized and irrefutable." Marcus nodded slowly. "And who exactly should I report it to? If the principal is in the Moores pocket..." "Go through proper channels first, guidance counselor, then principal. When they inevitably drag their feet, you'll need to escalate." Diane's expression turned shrewd. "The school board meets next Friday." "Public comments are welcome." "You think I should take it to the school board?" "I think you should do what you think is right," Diane replied carefully. "Just be prepared for the fallout. Harrington doesn't like being bypassed, and the Moores don't like being challenged." Marcus thought of Elijah's bruised face, of the torn letter from his mother. "Some things are worth the risk." Diane studied him for a long moment before nodding. "For what it's worth, I think Elijah is lucky to have you in his corner." She gathered her things to leave, then paused. "Oh, and Marcus, a word of advice from someone who's weathered a few storms here. Make sure your own classroom is spotless. Harrington will be looking for any reason to find fault with you." As Diane walked away, Marcus returned to the bullying policy, now reading between the lines with new eyes. By the time the bell rang, ending the lunch period, he had a plan forming. It would be risky, but if it meant protecting Elijah and possibly other students after him, Marcus knew he had no other choice. The next morning, Marcus arrived at school earlier than usual. The hallways were still quiet, most students not due for another forty-five minutes. He'd spent half the night preparing, researching the school's policies, reviewing his documentation options, and drafting what he would say when he confronted Jason Moore. He was arranging handouts on the desks when a soft knock at his open door made him look up. Elijah stood in the doorway, looking even more exhausted than the day before. "Elijah," Marcus said, concern immediately sharpening his focus. "You're here early." The boy stepped into the classroom, glancing nervously over his shoulder. "My mom had an early meeting. She dropped me off on her way." He hesitated. "I was hoping I could stay in here until class starts?" "Of course," Marcus said, gesturing to the desks. "Make yourself comfortable." Elijah chose the same desk by the window where he usually sat, pulling out a book and keeping his head down. Something about the boy's demeanor, the tense set of his shoulders, the way his eyes kept darting to the door, told Marcus there was more going on. "Elijah," he said gently, moving to sit at the desk next to the teenager. "Did something else happen?" For a long moment, Elijah remained silent, his fingers tracing patterns on the cover of his book. Then slowly, he reached into his backpack and withdrew his phone. With trembling fingers, he navigated to his social media account and handed the device to Marcus. Marcus felt his blood run cold as he scrolled through the screen. Someone, Jason presumably, had created a fake profile using Elijah's name and photo. The account was filled with vile racist comments supposedly written by Elijah, directed at various students at Westlake. The most recent post, timestamp from eleven forty-two P M the night before, contained a direct threat to a female student. "This isn't me," Elijah whispered, his voice cracking. "I would never, I didn't." "I know," Marcus said firmly, handing the phone back. "I know this isn't you, Elijah. Everyone thinks it is. The comments, the messages I'm getting..." Elijah's hands were shaking so badly he nearly dropped the phone. "They're saying I should kill myself, that they're going to take care of me after school today." Marcus felt a surge of protective rage so powerful it momentarily stole his breath. "Listen to me, Elijah. First, we're reporting this right now to the school and to the police. This crosses every line. It's not just bullying anymore, it's identity theft and criminal threatening. The police..." Elijah's eyes widened in panic. "Mr. Washington, please, that'll just make everything worse." "Trust me on this," Marcus said, his voice gentle but firm. "What they're doing is illegal and dangerous." He checked the time. "Come with me to the guidance office. Ms. Patel gets in early and she'll help us file a proper report." Elijah looked ready to bolt, fear radiating from him in almost palpable waves. "What if they don't believe me? What if they think I really wrote those things?" Marcus met the boy's frightened gaze steadily. "Then I'll stand right beside you and make them listen until they understand the truth." Something in Marcus's unwavering certainty seemed to reach Elijah. The boy took a deep, shuddering breath and nodded once. The guidance office was located in the administrative wing of the school. As they walked, Marcus noticed how Elijah stayed close to his side, eyes darting nervously at every sound. The hallways were beginning to fill with early arrivals, and several students gave Elijah hostile looks as they passed. "Just keep walking," Marcus murmured. "We're almost there." Ms. Patel, the head guidance counselor, was indeed at her desk when they arrived. A woman in her forties with a calm demeanor and reputation for fairness. She looked up from her computer with a welcoming smile that quickly faded when she saw their expressions. "Mr. Washington, Elijah, what's happened?" She asked, immediately gesturing them into her office. For the next twenty minutes, Marcus helped Elijah explain the escalating pattern of bullying, culminating with the fake social media account. Ms. Patel listened attentively, taking notes and asking clarifying questions without judgment. When Elijah showed her the account on his phone, her expression hardened. "This is extremely serious," she said, setting down her pen. "Elijah, I'm so sorry you've been experiencing this. I want you to know that we're going to address it immediately." She turned to Marcus. "Thank you for bringing this to my attention, Mr. Washington. I'll speak with Principal Harrington as soon as he arrives." "With all due respect, Ms. Patel," Marcus said carefully, "given the threats against Elijah, I believe we need to contact the police as well. This goes beyond school discipline at this point." Ms. Patel hesitated, a flicker of concern crossing her face. "I understand your perspective, but we have protocols to follow. Let me speak with the principal first and then..." "Someone is impersonating Elijah online, making violent threats in his name and threatening to harm him after school today." Marcus interrupted, keeping his voice level despite his rising frustration. "If we wait, this could escalate further. Elijah could be in physical danger, or he could be falsely accused of making threats himself." Ms. Patel studied him for a long moment before turning to Elijah. "Is that what you want, Elijah? For us to involve the police at this stage?" Elijah glanced nervously at Marcus, who gave him an encouraging nod. "I, I just want it to stop," the boy said finally. "I'm scared to be here today. After what they posted, people are looking at me like I'm some kind of monster." Something in the counselor's expression softened. "All right, I'll call the school resource officer to come take a report." She checked her watch. "The first bell rings in fifteen minutes. Elijah, would you feel comfortable staying here until Officer Rivera arrives?" Elijah nodded, relief evident in the slight loosening of his shoulders. "Mr. Washington, you should head to your classroom. Your students will be arriving soon," Ms. Patel said. "I'll make sure Elijah is taken care of, and I'll update you when I can." Marcus hesitated, reluctant to leave Elijah. "I'd like to be here when Officer Rivera takes his statement." "I appreciate your concern, but Elijah is in good hands now," Ms. Patel said, her tone firmer. "As his teacher, you've done exactly what you should by bringing this to us. Now it's time to let us handle it through the proper channels." Marcus recognized the dismissal for what it was. He turned to Elijah. "I'll check in with you later, okay? You're doing the right thing." The boy nodded, still looking frightened, but perhaps a shade less desperate than before. "Thank you, Mr. Washington." As Marcus walked back to his classroom, the hallways now buzzing with students, he couldn't shake the feeling that simply reporting the incident wouldn't be enough. Ms. Patel seemed genuinely concerned, but Marcus had been at Westlake long enough to know how these things typically played out. A slap on the wrist for Jason, perhaps a day of in-school suspension at most, and then business as usual, with Elijah now labeled as the kid who snitched. The morning classes passed in a blur. Marcus taught on autopilot, one part of his mind constantly returning to Elijah, wondering how the meeting with the resource officer had gone, whether Principal Harrington was taking the situation seriously. When Elijah didn't show up for his usual third period English class, Marcus's concern deepened. During his planning period, Marcus headed to the guidance office, only to find Ms. Patel in a meeting. The secretary informed him that Elijah had been sent home for the day, for his own safety. While the administration investigated the social media incident... "And Jason Moore?" Marcus asked. "Has he been questioned?" The secretary's expression turned guarded. "I'm not at liberty to discuss disciplinary matters involving other students, Mr. Washington." Marcus was about to press further when he spotted Jason Moore himself walking casually down the hallway, laughing with his friends. The sight of the boy apparently facing no consequences whatsoever made Marcus's jaw clench. Before he could think better of it, he stepped into the hallway. "Mr. Moore," he called, his voice carrying over the between-class chatter. "A word, please." Jason turned, surprise flickering across his face before it settled into a mask of polite attentiveness. The expression, Marcus had noticed, that the boy reserved for authority figures. "Yes, Mr. Washington?" "In my classroom," Marcus said, gesturing to his open door nearby. Jason glanced at his friends, a barely perceptible smirk passing between them before he shrugged and followed Marcus into the empty classroom. Marcus closed the door partway, leaving it open enough to be visible from the hallway but providing some privacy. He faced Jason, taking in the boy's expensive clothes, his casual stance, the hint of amusement playing around his mouth. "Is there a problem, sir?" Jason asked, all innocence. "I think you know exactly what the problem is," Marcus replied evenly. "The fake social media account, the threats against Elijah Parker." Something cold flickered in Jason's eyes, though his expression remained neutral. "I don't know what you're talking about." "Let me be perfectly clear," Marcus said, keeping his voice level despite the anger simmering beneath his words. "What you're doing isn't just bullying, it's harassment, it's potentially criminal, and it stops today." Jason's mask of politeness slipped, just for a moment, revealing a flash of contempt. "With all due respect, Mr. Washington, you're making some pretty serious accusations without any proof. Maybe you should be careful about that." The threat was thinly veiled, but Marcus didn't back down. "I don't need proof to put you on notice, Jason. I'm telling you directly that I'm aware of what's happening, and I will be watching closely." Jason studied him for a long moment before a slow smile spread across his face. "You know, my dad always says it's important to choose your battles wisely, Mr. Washington, especially when you're new somewhere." He adjusted his backpack strap with deliberate casualness. "Some people at this school have been here for generations, others are just passing through." The implication was clear, but Marcus refused to be intimidated. "Is that a threat, Mr. Moore?" "Just an observation, sir." Jason's smile never wavered. "Can I go now? I don't want to be late for class." Marcus stepped aside, allowing Jason to pass. "Remember what I said. This stops now." As Jason left, the boy paused in the doorway. "You know what the funny thing is, Mr. Washington? Everyone's so quick to believe Parker's the victim. But did anyone bother to ask why he got transferred here in the first place?" With that parting shot, he disappeared into the hallway. Marcus stood alone in his classroom, Jason's words echoing in his mind. It was clearly an attempt to plant doubt, to deflect from his own actions, and yet, he shook his head pushing the thought away. It didn't matter why Elijah had transferred to Westlake. Nothing justified the treatment he was receiving. Marcus had made his stand, and now he would have to deal with whatever consequences came his way. But then, the rest of the day passed without incident, though Marcus noticed he received cooler-than-usual greetings from certain faculty members when he stopped by the lounge for coffee. Word traveled fast at Westlake. He was packing up at the end of the day when Diane Lewis appeared in his doorway, her expression grave. "I hear you've been making waves," she said without preamble. Marcus continued organizing papers into his messenger bag. News travels fast. "It's a small school," Diane stepped inside, closing the door behind her. "Confronting Jason Moore directly wasn't what I meant by 'fighting smart,' Marcus." "I didn't threaten him, if that's what you're implying," Marcus said, looking up. "I simply made it clear that I'm aware of what he's doing to Elijah, and that it needs to stop." Diane sighed, perching on the edge of a student desk. "Harrington is furious. The Moores called him directly after Jason reported your conversation. They're claiming you singled out their son with unfounded accusations." Marcus felt a cold knot forming in his stomach, though he kept his expression neutral. "There's nothing unfounded about it. Elijah has evidence." "I know," Diane interrupted. "Ms. Patel filled me in. The resource officer is taking it seriously at least." She paused. "But you need to know that Harrington's looking for a reason to write you up, possibly more than that. For what? Protecting a student from harassment?" "For creating a hostile environment," was the phrase I heard him use. Diane's expression was sympathetic but realistic. "He's claiming you overstepped by confronting Jason directly instead of letting the administration handle it." Marcus closed his bag with perhaps more force than necessary. "And how exactly was the administration handling it? Jason was walking around school without a care in the world while Elijah was sent home, for his own safety. That tells me everything I need to know about Harrington's priorities." "I'm not disagreeing with you," Diane said quietly. "I'm just warning you to watch your back. This could get uglier before it gets better." Marcus took a deep breath, trying to rein in his frustration. "I appreciate the heads up, but I can't just stand by while a student is being targeted like this." "I know," Diane stood, straightening her lab coat. "For what it's worth, not everyone around here bows to the Moore family. Some of us have been waiting a long time for someone to stand up to them." She moved toward the door, then paused. "The school board meeting is still next Friday. Public comments start at seven P M." After Diane left, Marcus sat at his desk for a long time, weighing his options. He could back off, let the administration handle the situation their way, protect his job, or he could keep fighting for Elijah, potentially putting his career at risk. When he finally left the building, the decision had already been made in his heart. Some things were worth fighting for, even at a cost. He just hoped Elijah would be okay in the meantime. The next morning, Marcus arrived early again, half expecting to find Elijah waiting outside his classroom. Instead, he found a formal letter in his faculty mailbox requesting his presence at a disciplinary meeting with Principal Harrington after school. The charge: unprofessional conduct toward a student. Marcus slipped the letter into his bag, a mix of anger and determination settling in his chest. He'd expected this thanks to Diane's warning, but the reality of it still stung. Throughout the day, he kept an eye out for Elijah, but the boy didn't appear in class again. During lunch, Marcus tried calling the contact number listed in Elijah's student file, but it went straight to voicemail. He left a brief message expressing concern and asking Elijah's parent to call him back. When the final bell rang, Marcus straightened his tie and made his way to the principal's office. Janet, Harrington's longtime secretary, gave him a sympathetic look as she ushered him in. Principal Edward Harrington was a tall, lean man in his early sixties with thinning gray hair and wire-rimmed glasses. He'd been at Westlake for over twenty years, working his way up from history teacher to administrator. His office was meticulously organized, with framed photographs of himself with various local dignitaries displayed prominently on the walls. "Mr. Washington," Harrington said, not rising from behind his imposing desk. "Please, have a seat." Marcus sat in one of the stiffback chairs facing the desk, noticing that Vice Principal Mercer was also present. Notepad at the ready. "I assume you know why you're here," Harrington began, his tone clipped. "I received your letter," Marcus replied evenly. Though I have to say, I'm surprised to be facing disciplinary action for advocating for a student's safety. Harrington's expression hardened. "That's a rather creative interpretation of events. According to the report I received, you pulled Jason Moore into your classroom and accused him of serious misconduct without any evidence, creating what he described as a threatening environment." "I asked to speak with Jason privately about his treatment of Elijah Parker," Marcus corrected. "I did not threaten him in any way. I simply made it clear that the harassment needed to stop." "And what evidence did you have that Jason was involved in this alleged harassment?" Harrington asked, emphasizing the word "alleged" in a way that made Marcus's jaw tighten. "Elijah identified Jason and his friends as his tormentors," Marcus said. "The pattern of bullying has been escalating, culminating in a fake social media account created in Elijah's name, posting threatening content. Yet you took it upon yourself to accuse and confront Jason directly, rather than allowing the proper administrative channels to investigate?" Harrington said, his disapproval evident. "That's not how we handle things at Westlake, Mr. Washington." Marcus leaned forward slightly. "With all due respect, sir, how exactly does Westlake handle these things? Because from what I've observed, Jason Moore seems to operate with impunity, while Elijah Parker has been sent home for his own safety." Vice Principal Mercer looked up from her notepad, her eyebrows raised at Marcus's directness. Harrington's face flushed slightly. "We take all reports of bullying seriously, Mr. Washington. We are investigating the social media incident, and appropriate action will be taken if wrongdoing is determined. But that's not why you're here today." "Why am I here exactly?" Marcus asked. "For caring enough about a student's well-being to intervene when I saw him being systematically targeted? You're here because you overstepped your authority as a classroom teacher," Harrington said sharply. "You bypassed established protocols, made accusations against a student without due process, and potentially created a hostile educational environment." Marcus took a deep breath, working to keep his voice level. "If expressing concern about a student's safety constitutes overstepping, then perhaps the protocols themselves need to be examined." Harrington's expression turned cold. "This meeting isn't about examining protocols, Mr. Washington. It's about your conduct. I'm placing a formal letter of reprimand in your file. Any further incidents of this nature will result in more serious consequences, up to and including termination." Marcus felt a surge of indignation, but before he could respond, there was a knock at the door. Janet poked her head in, looking apologetic. "I'm sorry to interrupt, but Officer Rivera is here with Mrs. Parker. They're insisting on speaking with you immediately." Harrington's expression flickered with annoyance before settling into a professional mask. "We'll continue this later, Mr. Washington. You're dismissed for now." As Marcus stood to leave, the office door opened wider and two people entered, a uniformed police officer and a woman Marcus had never seen before. She was in her early forties, impeccably dressed in a tailored suit, with the same warm brown skin tone as Elijah, and a similar shape to her eyes, though hers held a steely determination that made even Harrington straighten in his seat. "Mrs. Parker," Harrington said, rising at last. "This is unexpected. I was under the impression we had scheduled a meeting for tomorrow morning to discuss Elijah's situation." "The situation has evolved, Principal Harrington," she replied, her voice calm but carrying an undercurrent of tightly controlled anger. "Officer Rivera has been investigating the online harassment against my son, and they've made some disturbing discoveries that couldn't wait until tomorrow." Officer Rivera, a stocky man with a no-nonsense demeanor, nodded. "We've traced the I P address used to create the fake account. It originated from a computer in your school's library, accessed during seventh period yesterday." Marcus, who had been about to leave, paused in the doorway, watching as Harrington's face went through a series of expressions, surprise, concern, and something that looked almost like resignation. "I see," Harrington said carefully. "That's troubling news." "We'll certainly cooperate fully with your investigation, Officer Rivera." "I'm glad to hear that," Mrs. Parker said, her gaze sweeping the room and landing on Marcus. "And you are?" "Marcus Washington," he replied. "I'm Elijah's English teacher." Recognition flashed in her eyes. "Mr. Washington, Elijah mentioned you. He said you were the only one who tried to help him." Before Marcus could respond, Harrington cut in smoothly. "Mrs. Parker, why don't we continue this discussion privately?" Mrs. Parker, why don ' t we continue this discussion privately? Mister Washington was just leaving. Actually, Officer Rivera interjected. I ' d like Mister Washington to stay. According to Elijah ' s statement, he was the first faculty member to document the bullying incidents. His perspective could be valuable. Harrington ' s jaw tightened almost imperceptibly, but he nodded. Very well, please, everyone have a seat. As they arranged themselves around Harrington ' s desk, Marcus couldn ' t help but notice how Mrs. Parker carried herself, with the quiet confidence of someone accustomed to being in charge. She sat directly across from Harrington, maintaining steady eye contact that seemed to make the principal increasingly uncomfortable. I want to be absolutely clear about something, Principal Harrington, Mrs. Parker began. My son has been subjected to escalating harassment since the day he arrived at Westlake. He reported it multiple times to various staff members, with no meaningful intervention until Mister Washington stepped in yesterday. Mrs. Parker, I assure you that we take all reports of bullying very seriously, Harrington started. Please don ' t insult my intelligence. She interrupted, her voice still perfectly measured. If you had taken it seriously, my son wouldn ' t have been attacked in your school bathroom. He wouldn ' t have had his personal property destroyed, and he certainly wouldn ' t have been the target of a criminal harassment campaign on social media. Officer Rivera opened a folder he ' d been carrying. We ' ve identified several students involved in creating and posting to the fake account. Jason Moore appears to be the ringleader, based on our digital forensics and witness statements. At the mention of Jason ' s name, Harrington shifted uncomfortably. Officer, we should be careful about making accusations before. We have the evidence, Principal Harrington, Officer Rivera said firmly. Multiple witnesses have corroborated Elijah ' s account, and the digital trail is clear. This isn ' t just bullying, it ' s criminal harassment and identity theft. These are serious offenses. Mrs. Parker fixed her gaze on Harrington. My son will not be returning to school until I am satisfied that appropriate action has been taken against the students responsible and that measures are in place to ensure his safety. I understand your concerns, Mrs. Parker, Harrington said, his tone conciliatory. We ' ll certainly review our bullying prevention protocols and. I don ' t think you do understand, she interrupted again. This isn ' t about reviewing protocols. This is about holding students accountable for criminal behavior and addressing the culture that allowed it to happen. She paused, her expression hardening slightly. I ' ve been reviewing Westlake ' s disciplinary records for the past three years. There ' s a disturbing pattern of certain students, particularly athletes from influential families, receiving minimal consequences for serious infractions. Marcus watched as Harrington ' s face paled slightly. Mrs. Parker, student disciplinary records are confidential. I ' m not sure how you would have access to. I have access because it ' s my job to have access, Principal Harrington, she said evenly. Perhaps I should have introduced myself more formally. I ' m Doctor Vanessa Parker, newly appointed president of the Westlake School Board. The silence that followed was deafening. Marcus stared at Mrs. Parker, Doctor Parker, as the pieces clicked into place. The school board president. Elijah ' s mother was the school board president. Harrington looked as though someone had just pulled the floor out from under him. I, I wasn ' t aware that you, that is, your appointment must have been very recent. Three weeks ago, she confirmed. Same week my son transferred here. I chose not to make a point of my position because I wanted Elijah to have a normal experience, to be treated like any other student. Her expression turned sad. Instead, I learned how normal students without connections are actually treated at Westlake. Marcus found himself reassessing everything he knew about Elijah. The boy ' s careful speech, his fancy clothes, that Jason and his friends had mocked. They weren ' t signs of pretension but simply reflections of his upbringing. And his mother ' s daily notes weren ' t just expressions of parental love, but perhaps attempts to encourage her son as he navigated a new school while carrying the weight of her high profile position. Doctor Parker, Harrington began, visibly struggling to regain his composure. I want to assure you that we will address this situation with the utmost seriousness. Jason Moore and any other students involved will face appropriate consequences, and we ' ll take immediate steps to ensure Elijah ' s safety when he returns. Doctor Parker regarded him steadily. I appreciate that commitment, Principal Harrington. I ' ll be watching closely to see how it ' s implemented. She turned to Officer Rivera. What happens next with the investigation? We ' ll be bringing Jason Moore and the other involved students in for questioning, the officer replied. Their parents will be notified. Given their ages and the nature of the offenses, they ' ll likely face juvenile court proceedings. Doctor Parker nodded, then turned to Marcus. Mister Washington, I understand from Elijah that you were facing some professional consequences for advocating on his behalf. Marcus hesitated, aware of Harrington ' s eyes on him. There was a misunderstanding about proper protocols, he said carefully. A misunderstanding that was about to result in a formal reprimand, from what I gathered when I arrived. Doctor Parker said, her gaze shifting to Harrington. I trust that misunderstanding has now been clarified, Principal Harrington? Harrington cleared his throat. Yes, absolutely. Mister Washington was simply showing appropriate concern for a student. There will be no reprimand. Doctor Parker stood, gathering her purse. Good, didn ' t he? Not good. Officer Rivera, thank you for your assistance. Principal Harrington, I expect a full report on this situation at the board meeting next Friday, including the disciplinary actions taken and the steps being implemented to prevent similar incidents in the future. She extended her hand to Marcus. Mister Washington, would you have time to speak with me privately? I ' d like to hear more about your interactions with Elijah. Of course, Marcus replied, shaking her hand. As they left Harrington ' s office, Marcus felt a complex mix of emotions. Relief that Elijah would get justice, satisfaction at seeing Jason held accountable, and a certain sympathy for Elijah ' s position. The boy hadn ' t asked for any of this. Not his mother ' s high profile role, not the bullying, not even Marcus ' s intervention. He just wanted to be a normal teenager, navigating high school without a target on his back. Outside in the parking lot, Doctor Parker turned to Marcus, her professional demeanor softening slightly. I want to thank you properly, Mister Washington. Elijah told me everything. How you noticed the bullying, how you encouraged him to report it, how you stood up for him when others wouldn ' t. Not many teachers would have taken that risk. I just did what I thought was right, Marcus said simply. Elijah is a good kid. He didn ' t deserve any of what happened to him. Doctor Parker studied him for a moment. May I ask why? Why you chose to get involved when others looked the other way? Marcus thought about the question, about his own high school experiences, about the teachers who had seen but done nothing. Because someone should have done the same for me when I was his age, he said finally. And because sometimes all it takes to change a kid ' s life is one adult who refuses to look away. Something in Doctor Parker ' s expression shifted, a vulnerability briefly visible beneath her composed exterior. Elijah said almost the same thing about you, that you were the only one who really saw him. She glanced down, then back up, her eyes now shining with unshed tears. He ' s had a difficult year. His father passed away unexpectedly nine months ago. That ' s partly why we moved here, for a fresh start. I ' m so sorry, Marcus said, understanding now another layer of Elijah ' s isolation, why those daily notes from his mother had meant so much. The irony is, I took this position on the school board because I wanted to make a difference in education, to ensure that all students have equal opportunities and protection, Doctor Parker continued. And then I sent my own son into an environment where he was targeted and unprotected. She shook her head. If you hadn ' t stepped in when you did. But I did, Marcus said gently. And now you ' re here, and things will change. For Elijah and for other kids who might have faced the same treatment. Doctor Parker nodded, composing herself. Yes, they will change. I promise you that. She handed him a business card. Please call me if you need anything or if you notice any further issues with Elijah when he returns. And I hope I can count on you to speak at the board meeting next Friday? Your perspective would be valuable. I ' ll be there, Marcus promised, taking the card. As Doctor Parker drove away, Marcus stood in the parking lot, watching the late afternoon sunlight slant across the school building. He thought about Elijah, about Jason, about the complex web of power and privilege that had shaped their interactions. Most of all, he thought about the difference one person could make by simply refusing to look away when someone was suffering. He hadn ' t set out to be anyone ' s defender when he ' d taken this teaching position. But sometimes the most important lessons weren ' t found in textbooks or lesson plans. Sometimes they were found in the courage to stand up even when standing alone. The following Friday evening, Marcus adjusted his tie as he entered the district administration building where the school board meeting was being held. The large conference room was already filling with parents, teachers, and community members. A larger turnout than usual due to the controversy that had rippled through Westlake over the past week. Jason Moore and three other students had been suspended pending disciplinary hearings. The story had made the local newspaper, though the students ' names had been withheld due to their ages. The Moore family had been uncharacteristically silent, their usual influence seemingly diminished in the face of the evidence and Doctor Parker ' s position. Marcus spotted Diane Lewis sitting near the front and made his way toward her. Quite a turnout, she said as he took the seat beside her. Word travels fast, Marcus replied, echoing their conversation from the week before. Especially when it ' s this juicy. Diane nodded toward the door where Principal Harrington had just entered, looking distinctly uncomfortable. Harrington ' s been in damage control mode all week. Suddenly, he ' s the biggest advocate for anti- bullying programs you ' ve ever seen. Marcus couldn ' t help a small smile. Amazing how quickly perspectives can change. Speaking of change, Diane said, lowering her voice. Rumor has it Doctor Parker is pushing for a complete overhaul of the disciplinary system. Equal consequences regardless of whose name is on the football field. Before Marcus could respond, the room quieted as the board members filed in, Doctor Parker among them. She looked poised and professional, giving no indication of the personal stakes involved in the evening ' s discussion. The meeting proceeded through routine matters before reaching the agenda item titled, Review of Bullying Prevention Policies and Recent Incidents. Doctor Parker recused herself from leading this portion due to her personal connection, allowing the vice president to take over. Principal Harrington presented a report that managed to acknowledge the seriousness of the recent incidents while carefully avoiding any admission of systemic failures. He outlined new prevention measures and stricter enforcement protocols, emphasizing the administration ' s commitment to student safety. When the time came for public comments, several parents spoke about their own children ' s experiences with bullying at Westlake. Marcus listened, noting how many of these incidents had gone unaddressed or inadequately handled. The pattern was clear, and from the expressions of the board members, they recognized it too. Finally, the vice president called Marcus ' s name. As he approached the podium, Marcus felt a moment of nervousness, then steadied himself. This wasn ' t about him, it was about Elijah and all the other students who needed someone to speak for them. Good evening, he began. My name is Marcus Washington and I teach English at Westlake High School. I ' m here tonight because one week ago, a student came to me with bruises on his face and fear in his eyes. Marcus recounted Elijah ' s experience, careful to protect the boy ' s privacy while making the severity of the situation clear. He described the pattern of administrative inaction, the culture that protected certain students from consequences, and the courage it had taken for Elijah to speak up despite his fear. When I became a teacher, Marcus continued, I made a promise to myself that I would never be the adult who looks away when a child is suffering. That promise matters more to me than protocols or politics or professional consequences. He paused, looking directly at the board members. Every student deserves to feel safe at school. Every student deserves adults who will stand up for them, especially when it ' s difficult or inconvenient. If our policies or our culture make that harder rather than easier, then those policies and that culture need to change. A murmur of agreement rippled through the audience as Marcus returned to his seat. Doctor Parker ' s expression remained professional, but she gave him a small nod of acknowledgement. The meeting continued with the board voting unanimously to form a committee to revise the district ' s bullying policies, with input from students, parents, and teachers. They also approved funding for additional counseling services and training for staff on recognizing and addressing bullying. As the meeting adjourned, people began to file out, many stopping to speak with Marcus, thanking him for his words or sharing their own stories. He responded graciously, though his attention was drawn to a familiar figure standing quietly near the back of the room. Elijah. The boy looked different somehow, still reserved but standing straighter, his eyes clearer. Beside him stood his mother, engaged in conversation with several board members. Marcus made his way through the crowd toward Elijah. It ' s good to see you, he said when he reached the teenager. Sir, how are you doing? Elijah offered a small but genuine smile. Better, a lot better, actually. He glanced toward his mother, then back to Marcus. I wanted to thank you for believing me, for standing up for me when no one else would. You don ' t need to thank me for that, Marcus said gently. It ' s what any teacher should have done. But you were the only one who did, Elijah pointed out. And I know it almost got you in trouble. He hesitated, then added. My mom told me about the meeting in Principal Harrington ' s office, about how they were going to give you a formal reprimand before she and Officer Rivera showed up. Marcus shrugged. Some things are worth the risk. Elijah studied him for a moment. My dad used to say that, that you can tell what someone really values by what they ' re willing to risk for it. His voice wavered slightly at the mention of his father. Your dad sounds like he was a wise man, Marcus said. He was. Elijah ' s eyes grew distant for a moment before refocusing. I ' m coming back to school on Monday. Jason and his friends are still suspended, and when they come back, they have to do community service and attend these counseling sessions. How do you feel about that? Marcus asked. Elijah considered the question seriously. Nervous, I guess, but also, ready? I don ' t want to hide anymore. And mom says the new policies will make it easier for kids to report problems without fear of retaliation. She ' s right, Marcus agreed. And I ' ll be there too if you need someone to talk to. Doctor Parker joined them then, having concluded her conversations with the other board members. Mister Washington, she said warmly, your speech was powerful. Thank you for sharing your perspective. Just telling the truth as I see it, Marcus replied. Sometimes that ' s the bravest thing we can do, she said. The committee to revise our bullying policies will be forming next week. I was hoping you might consider serving on it. We need educators who understand what ' s really happening in our classrooms. Marcus felt a surge of optimism, the first real chance to make systemic changes that could protect students like Elijah in the future. I ' d be honored, he said. As they said their goodbyes, Marcus watched Elijah and his mother walk away, their shoulders close, talking animatedly. Despite everything he ' d been through, Elijah was walking taller now, no longer trying to make himself invisible. Diane joined Marcus as he gathered his things to leave. Well, she said with a knowing smile. It seems like you ' ve made quite an impression on our new school board president. I was just doing my job, Marcus replied. No, Diane said, her expression turning serious. You were doing more than your job. You were being the teacher those kids deserve, all of them, not just the ones with powerful parents or athletic scholarships. She patted his shoulder. That committee appointment is just the beginning, you know. Doctor Parker clearly recognizes what you have to offer. Marcus smiled, thinking about Elijah ' s words about his father, about how you could tell what someone valued by what they were willing to risk for it. Whatever comes next, I ' m just glad Elijah ' s going to be okay. Because of you, Diane reminded him. Never forget that. As Marcus walked to his car under the star- filled sky, he reflected on the unexpected journey of the past two weeks. He hadn ' t set out to be anyone ' s defender when he ' d taken this teaching position. He certainly hadn ' t planned to challenge the status quo at Westlake or to find himself in the middle of a schoolwide reckoning with its culture of privilege and protection. But sometimes the most important moments in life weren ' t the ones you planned for. They were the ones where you simply refused to look away when someone needed you. In standing up for Elijah, Marcus had rediscovered something essential about himself, about the teacher and the person he wanted to be. Black teacher defends bullied student. The words that had echoed in his mind that day in his classroom had become something more, a choice, a stand, a defining moment. And in that moment, without knowing anything about Elijah ' s mother or her position, Marcus had chosen what was right over what was easy. Some things he knew now more than ever were worth fighting for, no matter the risk, no matter the cost. Because sometimes all it took to change a life was one person willing to stand up and say, enough.